The April 30th, 2020 special school board meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided to individuals to address the board on matters concerning operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. If you wish to address the board regarding regular agenda items or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thoreau, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Ms. Suzanne Green, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, now it's the school board's turn to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board this morning.
In compliance with Section 286.0114 Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at today's meeting either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms are due to the school board secretary no later than 9:10. This morning, speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board meeting in the order received by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to others. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comment, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. Thank you.
Yes, we do. Ms. Tammy Rollerson?
Hello.
Good morning.
My name is Tammy Rollerson. I am from Dunellen 20075, Southwest 85th Place, Dunellen, Florida 34431. And, pardon me. I would first like to thank all of you guys. You've worked so hard and you're amazing people. And I just want to let you know that I appreciate you. And many people, you know, may not recognize all of the hard work that the Marion County School Board has put in. But I do want to share with you that I have heard a lot of positive feedback in reference to the fact that you have taken that extra mile and went above and beyond for our community where, you know, other places didn't do that. And so that just means the world to us. My daughter is graduating this year as a senior from Dunellen High School. Actually, I should correct myself. She's a junior, but she is graduating this year. And we seen a post on Facebook and a lot of family and friends were concerned about some of the things that were in the post. And so, you know, just hopefully the things that I share with you today, it won't fall on deaf ears. And, you know, maybe some of our information coming from myself and also some of my friends and family might help with some of your decision making. So I just wanted to start off with the fact that I know that we are in crazy times right now and nobody really knows what is going to happen, you know, in the next week, two weeks, 30 days. And that's a really hard way for all of us to be able to make any type of decisions because we don't know what is going to happen moving forward. Right now, we're in phase one and being in phase one, it doesn't really feel like much difference is taking place. And so it is something that we are asking for the board to take into high consideration that most likely we're not going to be in phase one whenever this graduation takes place. We're most likely going to be in phase two, possibly phase three. But with that being said, this is the reason why I would highly recommend to move the graduation date out as far as you possibly can. I understand there are people that are leaving. They're going to college. They're going into the military. I understand that completely. But the truth of the matter is, is that there is going to be way more people that can be in attendance in early June, middle of June, or late June than the people that are going to have to miss out if we do it earlier. And I am speaking of the family and friends of the actual students that are graduating. I think it is a beautiful thing that you have created a way for these kids to be able to walk still. I think that is amazing. But to be recognized is to have us there. To be recognized is to have that aunt that picked you up from school or the brother that fought with you every day going back and forth to school or, you know, the blended families that we all come from now. How do you choose between your stepmom and your real mom and your stepdad and your real dad or Grammy and Nana and Umbuela? How do you do that? You can't do that. And to put the pressure on these children, they have to be the ones that makes that decision at the end of the day. My daughter actually said that first thing this morning, "Mom, I don't know how I'm going to choose." "Honey, you ain't going to choose. It's going to be your mom and daddy." But she thought she had the choice and that's okay. But that was on her mind that she was going to have to decide. Her Grammy can't come to her graduation. And I know every single one of you in this room have somebody that you're going through that with as well. I watched the meeting last night and I know pastor over there has a daughter that's graduating from college and y'all are going through the same exact situation. So I get it that every single one of you in this room are going through the same exact thing. I just ask you to try to please keep that in mind. To be recognized is for the family to be there, is for the friends to be there. And I feel postponing it and putting it out as far as you possibly can and giving us that opportunity to be in phase two, be in phase three to where some of the social distancing guidelines can obviously be lifted. I know I have a very short time to speak. Processioning, I just ask that if for some reason family's not allowed to be there, I get that you can't bring them all into a group for them to section themselves out to walk into a procession. I just, please, try to at least have the processional music playing, maybe a slideshow of them having that moment of waving or something because that's such a moment. It's such a moment in time to be able to walk in and be like, "I did it. I did it." And to know that you're not going to have that walk is devastating for some of the kids. I understand you can't have your cake and eat it too. There are going to be some disappointments. I know that. I just ask if processioning could definitely be something that everybody can really try to take into very serious consideration. And then the one other thing I just wanted to mention is that the mainstream high schools in Marion County. Thank you. Oh, last thing then. Mainstream high schools, I just ask that if you have smaller communities such as Dunellen High School, we have 250. You have these larger high schools. I just ask to maybe even consider different guidelines if you don't make it and all across the board. So thank you, everybody, for your time. We are praying for all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions for me or I'm done? We're good? Okay.
Thank you.
You know, I would like to say something. She made all, took the trouble to come here in the rain. You know, we're still working through this. It's crazy. You know, we might be in level three by the end of May. We don't know. And so, you know, we're making decisions for like right this moment in time as though it's going to remain this way. But in two or three weeks, I mean, it could be a completely different picture. We don't know. But I will tell you that, because I don't have a problem with moving it into June, I still, here's the problem. If we have a rain day, then we might be into July or something or into, I mean, or we might not get it done at all because we go into the rainy season. So we've even discussed doing morning graduations. We've discussed a lot of things. But I will tell you that I do remember at Lake Weir High School, I do know at the high schools, if it does rain, that's not used in southeastern, when it's raining in a graduation, I remember one or two of them at Lake Weir, where we did have to have it in the gymnasium and kids did have to choose. I mean, they could only get like two kids because Lake Weir's fairly big. And so they could only take like two kids, two parents, two tickets because it was in the gymnasium. So this has been done before. This isn't the first time it's ever been done. But I agree that we got to listen to input and we just got to remember those rain days. How will we, how will we work all that in? So the superintendent has a lot, she has a lot on her plate. And so.
Yes, absolutely.
And so we're, you know, she's being very flexible with the board and we're talking back and forth with her people and everything. And so, so just hang in there.
Absolutely.
We'll figure this out.
I can, I can tell you that it will not be unlimited tickets, that there will be a limit.
It has to be.
There has to be a limit to how many, how many people can attend regardless of what phase we're in. So, you know, it's not going to be every cousin, every aunt, every grandma. It's just not going to be. So to even think that we would loosen it that much is an unrealistic expectation and everybody needs to hear that.
Thank you.
Because that will not happen. Chances of it being more than two tickets is a slight possibility, but not a real possibility. So, you know, we heard loud and clear that we wanted, from the principals, student government leaders, that they wanted a graduation. So we are making provisions to have that happen. We will be live streaming each graduation, so they will be able to see it. But, but we've had, I've had a lot of emails about cousins and aunts and uncles. That's not going to happen. So there will be a limited number regardless of what phase we're in.
May I make a comment?
We just need to be very clear about that.
Thank you. In reference to rain day, I promise you, we would all bring umbrellas. Nobody would be upset with it. I promise. I promise, no, I promise you that. There will not be one, we would stand out there and complete victory, no problem. Don't even worry about a rain day. And then also whenever it comes to the amount of people, I completely respect that. I just ask you to please take into serious consideration that we do have blended families. Almost probably everybody in this room does. Please, please consider mom, dad, stepmom, stepdad. And you got to consider at least siblings. I would ask, please, to try to do at least six and do social distancing by six feet of family. Do social distancing by six feet of family.
Mrs. Rollerson?
Thank you.
We are having to balance the logistics, the safety, and the depth of everyone's emotions. So please know that you are heard and you're speaking for many, many others. I think we've all gotten these just wrenching emails and phone calls from parents. And, but I also balance that with, you know, no one can take away 12 years of accomplishment. Yes, it's a very important ceremony. But at the same time, looking at what we're navigating through here is also, there is a lot of embedded lessons in that. And I know all of our kids are watching us as the adults navigate through this. And so please keep that in mind as well.
Of course, absolutely.
You know, resiliency is very important during times of crisis. And, you know, looking back on history, what people have had to go through to get to where we are today, you know, perspective is important. Perspective is very important.
And I know that you're just trying to keep us safe. We understand that.
And I received a very heartfelt email yesterday from a Dunellen High School senior informing me of these same concerns and everything and notifying me of how important it was. And I appreciate the accomplishments that she's, they have made, all of these kids. I appreciate the hard work that they've gone through for 13 years. I appreciate all of that and I want to celebrate it with them. But when it comes to something like this, safety has to come first. And I ended my email to that young lady and said that graduation is the closing of one chapter and the starting of another chapter of their life. I personally, as a board member, would not want to put those kids into a situation where that that graduation was their final chapter because of a virus. So that's my concern because I have to wake up the next day and I want to make sure that they have a life beyond that one day. So we are taking into consideration, I promise you, there's not one of us on this board that has not looked at all of these things, these concerns that you guys are bringing. We are seriously going to look at everything, but we're going to have to, I believe that we're going to err on the side of safety over numbers. That's what I believe.
I believe we're, I believe live streaming, you know, superintendent worked with the crews and everything to live stream and just getting that all lined up. You know, it's just going to be a different way, maybe having house parties with your family. You know, your relatives and everybody's at your house. You're live streaming it together and making it a family party. And, you know, it might, it could be an enjoyable time because you're, you're there with them in a different way. But think of districts that's not even doing that for their kids. You know, this way, at least you can have your family parties at home and then the kids can bring their friends to your house or however you want to work it because it's your home and have their gatherings there, their close friends and stuff. But, and I even talked about the parent, you know, like even in their gown and everything, they could stand in front with their parents or their grandparents or whatever in front of the marquee at the high school. You know, graduation, you know, 2020, in front of the marquee with their family members and siblings and everybody and get a nice family picture in front of the marquee where it talks, you know, it's the high school marquee to have something at school. So y'all are going to get very creative, I think.
And I want to go back to this. Last week, we saw something really, really unprecedented for those who are sports fans. They did the NFL draft virtually. It did not change the fact that the number one draft pick was the number one draft pick. It did not change the fact that if they got drafted, they still had the same celebration and the same recognition of that accomplishment. So we're in some non-traditional times. We're going to do some non-traditional things. And to these students that are listening to us, we're not devaluing anything that you have done. We're not dumbing it down or anything like that. We are, we are truly in a position where we have to look at safety first. We have to. Because I don't, the worst thing that for me personally would be to hear that we had a graduation ceremony and 25, 30 people got contracted to coronavirus because we got lax, laxer than we should have been. And that would, that would, that would be horrible. That would be horrible.
I do agree with that 100%. And I'm just asking again to please consider the amount of students per high school. Please don't mandate the same guidelines on a school that has 250 seniors versus a school that has 800 seniors. Please take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Absolutely. Your involvement is very important.
Yes, ma'am.
We hear you.
You might want to hang out in the lobby. I put a list of topics at your seat and I put them in an order we had, the group had talked about. But, and Mr. McAtier was going to be second for graduation. Let's bump him to first so he'll come on in.
Where are we going there for? Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. We're moving fast. You stay right there. Stay right there, stay right there. I have a motion to discuss the COVID-19 update. Because this is all a part of the COVID-19 updates. I have a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thoreau, seconded by Ms. King. All, any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Dr. Mayer, your updates.
Yes, so Mr. McAtier is passing out some different options. And even beyond the dates, he's come up with some really creative opportunities for us. So he'll, he'll update us all here.
Good morning and appreciate you taking the time to talk about graduation with me this morning. I know that it's something that is a very hot topic item as it should be with our seniors. And I'm very excited to be a part of making sure that we do the best we can while balancing public health along with honoring students. And I appreciate your comments this morning. They were, you know, pretty much said a lot of what I could say in terms of we're going to try to err and make sure that we work with students and principals, but also make sure that we are working with families, but we're also making sure that we are in the best interest of public health and that we have the blessing of the authorities that, you know, administer those types of dictates throughout our county and our state. I think that's extremely important and that's something that I, we really didn't talk too much about last time. But I think that that is one of the concerns that we definitely have to have. So I met with the high school principals, as I told you I would. Did it via Zoom. The next morning, we're going to do it that afternoon, but a lot of them had principal, I mean, faculty meetings with their staffs and different things. So we did it the next morning and we came up with some different options for graduation. I'm going to walk you through a little bit of it just to kind of, the first option came from the board. That was to do it as early as we possibly could. And the governor's dictate said that schools are closed until the end of the school year. So the end of the school year for us is June 1st. So you see there that May 28th and May 29th, we have a recognition ceremony for MTI and a graduation theoretically for Vanguard. Those would be at Booster Stadium, which are not on school campuses. Therefore, we would be within the letter of the governor's dictate and we would start on June 2nd with Forrest. And you can just kind of see, they agreed on the date. We did hear the board and they were excited about the board's nine o'clock or Saturday, I mean, morning time, excuse me, not Saturday, but morning time. So they were, they were great with that. It gives us a lot more time, as several of you said last time, for rain makeups. That gives us a lot more time for heat. I mean, ideally, we'd do it at eight, but quite honestly, with what it's going to take to set up, we need to have two to three hours in the morning for our folks, which is going to be a skeleton crew for Amelia's folks, for Kevin, for myself and for all the area directors and my staff that are going to be there because we're going to be the ones setting this up with the school officials. So wanted to make sure that you saw that. So again, no major, you know, there's no major changes in large gatherings. And I spoke to a couple of my folks from churches today that I've been talking to and I'll get to that in a moment. But, you know, if there's no changes in large gatherings, those dates may not be approved by the authorities. I mean, that's one of the things that we're looking at. But I wanted to be responsive to what you asked and do it as early as we possibly could to make sure that we, you know, were able to address folks that might be leaving early because I know that is definitely a concern and I get that. Option two kind of goes with what the first speaker was talking about a little bit. That was what we had originally proposed, so I just kind of left it on there. The beginning of the, actually the end of the second week of June and the beginning of the third week of June, just kind of run these every day until we're finished at 9:00 a.m. And backup dates for whatever we do, I think, would be July because there may be possible changes for option two and what phase we're in. We're hopeful and optimistic, but we're also realistic. And then option three would be hopeful changes. And, you know, I just think that it's very important that we understand. I think you guys said it very eloquently this morning, so I don't really want to say it over and over again. But we do not, you know, we want to be worst case scenario. We don't want to be best case scenario. I would love to tell folks that we could have 20 and 25 folks in there. And, you know, and then if, after we pay for plane tickets, after we do all those types of things, the Department of Health or the law enforcement or emergency management or the board itself or superintendent decides this isn't in the best interest. That, to me, would be misleading. I would rather worst case scenario it. And then if we're able to loosen up, I mean, I mean, I'd just be from a very practical standpoint, from being out in the 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock sun, I think myself and the area directors would love to have as many folks come in as possible so we didn't have to do the X's on every place in the stadium if that's the route that we went. So I mean, and ultimately, I'm joking, but ultimately, we would like for as many folks, like the nice lady that came in before said, to attend. But as every one of you pretty much said, realistically, that's, there's, you know, in the times that we're in right now, just looking forward, we have to operate worst case scenario. We would be, you know, not being fair to folks, even though we might make them happy now, there would be no returns. We have to think it through the impact of what would happen. So I kind of wanted to talk to you something. Ms. McCall mentioned it and I was already working on it, but she brought it up last time and I kind of told her to stay tuned. I'm working with some local churches to talk about drive-up graduation. And this, I've met with a couple. I'm meeting with another one this weekend. And, you know, it's a very interesting concept. And obviously, a lot of our larger churches have already perfected it. And we're just looking at worst, worst, worst case scenario. What if we couldn't have any large crowds? What would we do? And I, you know, I want to give kudos to, I think I told you this last time, but a month and a half, two months ago, really early on, the gentleman, Mr. Worsky from the Ocala Drive-In reached out to us, which was a very nice thing to do. And I appreciated that. I told him so and I called him. Unfortunately, he has about 240 to 250 slots and that's just too small. Our churches are serving, a couple of our churches are serving 300 to 400. When I went out and walked them, they have the capacity to do 600, which obviously Westport and Forrest are going to be a concern. So we're kind of working with those folks to kind of see what they can do. Again, I've got another meeting on Saturday. I'm going to go out and kind of see as they're setting it up what it looks like. And it's something that's very intriguing to us. Again, best case scenario, we'd rather have it at our stadiums. We'd rather do those things and have, so we could have closer to our school. So we would have our stages. We would have things that we know. But I just can't say enough about community members stepping up. Again, Mr. Worsky from the Ocala Drive-In, I greatly appreciate. Wish we could work with him. Unfortunately, it's just not large enough. But I mean, we've had, I've had folks from churches reach out to me and I'm very, very appreciative. So what that would look like is that they've actually, in two of the churches I've talked to, I've already cut down trees because they've had to cut down trees to be able to have visual. The students would either be on an outdoor, walking across an outdoor stage or we would have to keep them, depending on what facility we use, we'd have to keep them in small groups, which would be interesting. We're going to have to figure out how we would do that and have them inside the church. Or if you outside, put them in different groups in the area outside, making sure that we're following social distancing and those types of things and making sure that there, we don't have the large groups congregating. But they would actually, it'd be the same kind of setup as we talked about last week with ours. It's just parents would be in their cars. There'd be an FM translator. Again, what both of the churches, or three of the churches I've talked to so far has said is that they, some parents use the FM, some people use the FM translator. Some people, their speaker system is loud enough. They're willing to put up multiple screens for us, you know. They have, one of the churches has a parking team that would work with us. It does it every week, so they know where not to put you in front of the light pole. Again, capacity is going to be an issue. But here's the deal. I'm a very blunt and realistic person. Either type of graduation is going to be painful for large crowds. I mean, if we have cars, we're only going to be able to allow one car a parent and that includes, that means we wouldn't be, probably we'd be able to have student parking. The parent would have to come with a student or the parent would have to be dropped off by the student, go back. There'd have to be some creativity. I certainly understand blended families and it's tough. I get it, but, and I understand.
It's for the van rental companies.
I, I, I mean, yeah, I mean, you, and I actually thought about that.
Stretch vehicles rolling in there.
You would see some larger SUVs with large groups in there. But I mean, either way, it's going to be painful. And again, I, I mean, my.
I think different.
Yes.
It's going to be different.
Well, my, my father's 84 and my mother's 81 and my niece is graduating from Westport High School. And either plan, they wouldn't be able to attend unless we got some sort of stretch vehicle. So I certainly understand. Like the lady before said, every one of you understands or there's a great story. But the one thing that we tried, there's two goals that we have here. To listen to the seniors, which said they wanted to have their ceremony together, not in smaller groups. And we also want to be equitable. And that's very important to me as a former principal with Dunellen High School and North Marion High School and those schools, the outer lying schools, that the schools that don't necessarily have the access to the resources at some of our other schools. So when I've talked to these churches, I've said, can you do all of our seven traditional high schools and our technical school? And they've all said yes. So we're just still kind of working on that. But again, I want to make sure, again, I want to thank Mr. Worsky from the Ocala Drive-In and the other folks that have definitely tried to help us. Again, it's just about capacity. That really is, we don't want to have yet another obstacle in terms of having to have folks in there and not have even more, not even more folks to come. But I think these churches are really going to step up. So what I'm proposing to the board today and what I would recommend is you give me another week. I come back on Thursday to the next work session and then we've got some hard decisions to make. And maybe something will change in the state, maybe it won't. But I would say on May 7th, we've got to, we've got to, well, we think we've got to make a decision. And that decision could be, these are the dates, but we're either going to do the school or the church. It doesn't have to be. I just want to do a little bit more research. Again, I'm working, these folks are taking time out of their days for me to meet with me, walk the campus, walk the church sanctuary, walk the different. me, walk the campus, walk the church sanctuary, walk the different parking lots. I mean, you know, some of these churches have large areas of acreage that we walk all the way back, because I wanted to see if you could see the screen. So we really want to take this serious. And again, I think that this is a, the dates that we have here, we kind of, but maybe by next week, we might know a little bit more about large groups. You know, we don't know what 25% capacity really means in terms of large. Again, I spoke to folks from churches this morning, they're still deciphering what it really means. Two of them told me they're probably not going to change anything right now. They're going to wait for phase two. And one said they were having meetings today, kind of figure it out. So I just-
Mr. McKeer, you might also want to check, we did have a conversation, Ashley Wheeler Gerds, who is the general manager for the Paddock Mall, has also offered the Paddock Mall, and I don't know if they have the, the parking capabilities, but they have large spaces where it would be easy to put kids in groups. So just, I think the churches are a great idea. They're already set up for that, but just as a second thinking point, just keep Paddock Mall in, in, because they do have the space.
My concern there again would be, like you said, the set of the screens. They definitely have the parking space. There's no doubt that they have the parking space on both sides, but that would probably require 12 to 14 screens, because that mall is very odd shape, because it's been added on so many times.
Kevin's chewing that gum faster and faster.
Well, you know, I think she's very willing to work with us and maybe, so I would just at least lead that kind of as an, as an-
I'll be glad to give her a call.
To have to reach out to her.
I'll be, I'll be glad to give her a call. I appreciate it, again, her and all the folks in the community you're trying to help. And I think these are unprecedented times and I appreciate your leadership, because, you know, it's, it's hard to say no when you know it's right, the right thing to do. I mean, trust me, I've been a high school principal for a long time and I just appreciate your leadership, superintendent's leadership, and that we continue to move forward. But my recommendation would be that we come back next Thursday and we make a decision.
You got it.
I like, I like option one with option two being a backup to option one.
Well, it kind of depends on where we are with what phase we're in.
Yeah, I hate waiting all the way till July.
Really- July, it's going to be hot as Hades and at 9:00 anywhere in Florida.
But I don't know that by option one, they're going to let large groups gather and regardless of what we do, that's still going to be a large group gathering and they-
But you know what? The other option is only, like Friday the 12th is only four days after the first option, so it's not that much difference between the dates.
Well, it is from May 28th to June 20th.
And that's what I anticipated. I did see that too, Ms. Stacy, but what I anticipated was that, I mean, again, anticipating in a time of, you know, unprecedented things happening is probably, you know, not a good idea, but I anticipated that we've been seeing different orders at the first of the month and we would be, you know, that's why I don't know that we're going to have anything into phase two, even if we may be ready or whether we're not ready, until, seems like everything's pretty much been first of the month calendar. And again, the problem is not that we, that, the planning that goes into it for the schools, the parents. I mean, we could have this scheduled for June and then they, and then they could say that you're not going into phase two until July 1, and we, phase two might be better for our communities. That's why I left the three options there. I mean, again, let me, let me do some research, I, and I'll, with the churches, again, continue to follow up and I'll actually reach out to them all also and just kind of see what they can offer and kind of go from there.
Thank you, team. They're working hard on this and the families need to know that we are looking at all options to make sure that we give them a great graduation.
That's our goal.
You said, you said something, you said that we listened to the kids, we heard what the kids said, that they want to have a graduation and that we were listening to the people and trying to make sure they had some type of graduation that was been conducive to what they've had in the past. So we're going to make something happen. We just don't know how it's going to look yet, but it's going to happen.
And it looks like too, the government seems to be like going like 25% occupancy in restaurants now opening, and then, you know, they'll be moving the, so probably that'll have to do with large groups too. Whether, is the gymnasium, I mean, is the football field, if they, after they, like before they do any spacing, is it, if they count seats, I don't know how many seats, 2,000 seats, I don't know how many seats. And, okay, what's one-fourth of that? Would that take those parents, one-fourth of that, you know, there's-
I mean, it's going to be, and that's where we would have to talk to the health department and Dr. Mayor would have to follow up with that, because that's one of those things where, you know, worst-case scenario, our largest school, Westport, has 650 graduates. We give two tickets, that's 1,950 people in the same place. Now, they're very spread out at that point, plus, let's say, 50 school and district.
And the stadium though, how many would it be? Like the stadium alone, you said there's how many students graduating?
Uh, there'd be 650.
So there would be like 1,300 people in the stadium. And about on the ground, that would be a whole new space of square footage too.
It really depends on capacity, and the capacity of that stadium is probably be, it's 1,300 is probably about 40 to 50%. Now, if you put chairs, I mean, really just, again, that's where, that's where I will have to, you know, defer to Dr. Mayor and the elected officials.
And it's outside.
Yeah.
And outside makes a difference too.
And we did call Mr. Landr at the health department and he's pondering this, so.
Yeah, because the one thing you don't want to see is us have a graduation, such as a Westport graduation, and then the next thing you know, you're looking at us on the news where you have crowds of people congregated together, there's no social distancing, so.
Right, and that's what is concerning, like, is discipline too. Like, it is going to have to be, if, if that is the route we go, like, because it is a celeb, everybody's celebrating. And, you know, the students got to know, because from that email I read yesterday, she was like, I want to sit next to my friends or not. Well, you know, it's, they got to know, you're not sitting next to your friends and this isn't the time you can-
Anyway, they've always said alphabetical, anyway.
Well, but the thing is, is when they're doing that, they're going to hug, they're crying, they're all that, and that's what I don't want to set us up for. I want us to be very smart, even if we can, because we, I think of 600 people in a crowd, times three, I just, you know.
That's scary, that is scary.
Right, and so the discipline scares, worries me and, you know.
I think there's only so much we can control though. I mean, we can't-
Well, we can control if we allow a large gathering.
If we allow the crowd, period.
That's what we have control over.
Or if we do the whole thing on just video or something like that, that's the only way we can control it, because when you put that many kids out there, we can't, there's no stopping 600 seniors from doing whatever they want to do in the middle of that field. We can't arrest them.
You just said what-
We control the things that we can control.
Right.
And that's what we, that's what we are charged to do, control the things that we can control.
And again, I think for the crowd, which isn't really, speak to Ms. King's point, because she's speaking more about the students, but I think to the crowd, one of the things that I think, again, when Dr. Mayor spoke to Sheriff Woods, I know we spoke to Chief Cram, because I saw Chief Cram at a meeting, and they're excited about being able to control access and being able to have folks on the ground that will do those types of things. But again, it doesn't address the students, because, I mean, that would be, we would just, we're going to have to hope that because we're doing something for them, we're going to have to think the best in people. And I understand what you're saying, because I was in discipline long enough in high school to think the worst sometimes, but we always have to think the best. And I think that's going to be something where we have their senior teachers on the ground with them and that they're going to be, you know, they're, I can tell them to do stuff all day long, and if I was their principal, that would mean a lot to them. As a district employee, if I go to Westport, it would mean a lot, because a lot of the seniors know me, but if, if I go to any other school, they're going to, but their senior teachers are there saying, listen, they did this for you, you need to do what you're supposed to, you guys can hug at your house, I mean, we can't control what you do off campus, but we need you to do the right things here. Again, that would take a lot, I think our principals, again, as I said last time, have shown tremendous leadership, and once we get this set, I think they can start working on them. And I think one of the things that I will mention too, we talked, we looked at our instructional minutes and our seniors' last day will be May 26th, and I know they've sent out some different things for different events that they're doing. If you follow Kevin on Twitter, Dr. Mayor's Mayor Moments on Twitter, there's a lot of different things that have been out there. The individual schools are doing that, so, I mean, again, they're using masks, they're not, students aren't getting out of their cars, and it's going to be, it's kind of like the Chromebook, but they're doing a lot, I know, and I know a lot, Forrest High School, for example, tomorrow is actually going out, kind of like some of the elementary schools have already done, into neighborhoods to recognize their kids. So I think a lot of positive is going to come out of this. So I think with that positive goodwill, I think that we're going to be able to have a graduation ceremony, if we're able to, through public health, that will, the kids will enjoy. Again, will it be what they've always had, as every one of you have said already today? No. But will it be better than showing their picture on a screen and having some pre-recorded speeches by, you know, Dr. Mayor and you and you folks? I mean, I, nothing wrong with that, but I think the kids need a better moment than that. I mean, some other districts, that's what they're doing.
And Green crafted some language we can use, do you want to talk about that a little bit, the disclaimer?
I, I, we talked a little bit about maybe posting some waiver language. I mean, there has been no challenges to, in court yet, to COVID-19 language, but I think we can try and mitigate, although not completely get rid of all the risk. But we can obviously talk about how you want to use that.
Okay. I will definitely come back next Thursday and hopefully I'll have a lot more information for you and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. McKeer.
Just a couple of things I wanted to add as, as well. As far as waiting too long, because for those of us that have attended a lot of graduations, even in May, in the evening at Westport is sweltering. And the last thing we need is for people that are already on the vulnerable side to be fallen out, because-
There's more of a chance of someone passing out from heat stroke than-
I believe so.
This virus that only-
Well, it is better, it is better in the mornings.
Mornings are better.
The heat's always held there's in the, and I'd sit in that, and it is better in the morning.
Yes, and this is more of a comment to the, a lot of the seniors that I know likely may be watching. I've been around long enough to remember the transition to the livestock pavilion, and at North Marion High, for example, we always had our graduations out on the football field on a Saturday morning. And then one year, the weather was very threatening and there was lightning around and, you know, we literally had to punt and try to move people inside, and some people are nodding, they remember. And so then, the next year, we started moving to the livestock pavilion. Well, in the beginning, kids and parents lost their minds. They're like, we don't want to go to a cow barn to graduate from in a pink pen.
They live in a cow barn out in Florida.
And, you know, some folks are like that and some folks simply do not, they had never even been there. And, but, you know, one or two years creates a new tradition. And now, people can't imagine not having it at the livestock pavilion. So, so that's another piece of this to, to keep in mind. We're very lucky in Florida that the warm weather is coming a lot more quickly than the northern states, so hopefully that'll help mitigate some of this virus. I'd also-
They're saying the sun kills it in like, how many seconds?
I hope so. I'd also like to give a little shout out too, to our local government, because they're, they're watching this very closely, our county commission and are advocating to individualize. You know, let's look at what's happening in Marion County, let's look at our numbers and plan accordingly. Florida's a huge state and what's happening at the bottom of the state compared to the middle of the state compared to the north and the far west, it's like four different states, you know. So, but everyone just kind of needs to keep their powder dry right now, because we just got information from the governor yesterday. We know how quickly this has been changing and the fluidity, so maybe just providing the assurance that we are listening and taking it all under advisement and continuing to encourage the communication and the feedback from the community, that, you know, when, when it gets right down to it, this is going to be really good. And it'll be something that everyone will be able to look back on and say, you know, it was, it was unique, I was part of this and, and look at what we were able to create. So, we'll get there.
Thank you, Ms. Thor.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next people that's coming in, this time, we got to be out of here shortly, so.
So, our hybrid work model will begin May 4th. Dr. Grantham's going to explain what that means, and then, right after that, Ms. Gary and Ms. Oliver are going to explain how we will take care of folks who, who still cannot come to work Monday and are essential, so thank you.
Good morning, everyone. The hybrid work model is what we talked about before, we allow employees to choose what is best for their family situation. Again, I will say the teachers have done a heck of a job with what they're doing and delivering instruction, and when I'm talking with the union, we have teachers that are doing classes at 5:30 and 6:30 and 7:30 at night, because, and that's not part of their contract, that just seems to work for their family, so I want to say that again as much as we can. As we talk to the unions, we have conversations about if you can prove to your supervisor that you can do your job from home, we'll allow that to happen. The IU PAT has been sitting here with, ready to go, knowing that certain people cannot work from home. So when we speak to the IU PAT representatives and their president, Diane is aware that painters have to come in and paint. There is an exception to that. You can do FMLA next week, you can, and DeWanna's going to speak to you about that, but we have the hybrid model ready, and hybrid means two things. It means you can work from home or you can work from your place of employment with caution if you can do your job. If you cannot, bus drivers can't drive buses at home, aides can't be on buses, so they're going to come in. We've been working with Becky, Becky's been having conversations. We're going to try as best we can to stay true to their job descriptions, but if a bus aide or a bus driver comes in and part of the job description is cleaning their bus, so after they clean their bus, if there's nothing to do, we've had conversations, then they're going to come help us at schools, again, with caution. So beginning Monday, they're going to work either from home or from their job site, and we're going to limit the numbers to 10, we're going to socially distance everybody like we normally do. But this conversation's been coming, the governor released everything yesterday, so we're in a pretty good place. We are still going to take care of our employees. There has been no determination when that stops, but we're going to do the hybrid model because it is working right now. It is working. But the exception is, and I ask IU PAT, there is not one employee that I can think of or job classification I can think of that can work from home in IU PAT. There's just no, there are some delineating folks in MESP, and Brent and I have worked with that, like, for example, an IPC, for registering students, he or she might have to come in, but then if they're not, they can do stuff from home. So we're just going to be very flexible, again, with the families and help them, but the, it will start Monday, and I waited for this meeting to confirm it with the union. We have a meeting tomorrow to make sure we're all in a good place with it, and then they're ready to go for Monday. They're ready to go.
My question is regarding the, the protocols. Say, for example, if a parent comes in to register a student and is by appointment, I think it's going to be really important for both the employee and for the families to know what that really is going to look like, because, let's face it, some families don't have a babysitter. And, you know, how many people-
If they've got seven kids, they're going to be-
Mr. Ayers is going to address that.
Okay, and, you know, is the IPC and, and the parent going to be required to wear masks and, and where are the masks going to come from and, you know, do they have to wash their hands?
The original intent was to begin registration on Monday, but we were not prepared for that. We wanted to start the way of work back, and then we chose in May 18th now is that date. So, the question that MESP, how are you going to protect our IPCs? So do we have masks? Do we have protection? Do we have protocols? And then, Mr. Ayers will be more specific, but it's going to be two folks coming to register. Because, you know, I've been a principal and then 10 people show up to register the kindergarten. Can't do that. Those days are over too. So, has to be very prescribed when they come in to protect the employees.
And he's working really closely with the area directors who are working with the principals. So, i- it's the same, it's like the same storm, but a different boat. You know, every, every school will be different, but that'll be communicated out to that school family.
And, and I do want to credit Mr. Ayers. He's been very flexible too. And we're trying to do a lot of things electronically, but still understanding some folks can't do the electronic version. But we have a, a feature in our Skyward system that you can do everything from Skyward and put it in there. So we're playing with that a little bit and he'll be more specific, but...
That was my concern too, because, um, we're in such an, an age where a lot of stuff can be done electronically without having to bring these folks, these families into... Because what we're doing is, by opening up, we're going to be opening up our schools and going to be opening up those places that we say that we've already cleaned and disinfected and bringing that stuff back into the school. Unless we had one central location in different parts of the county and let parents did appointments and came in. But we'll talk to that. We'll talk to that.
He's going to, we're going to work on it.
We'll talk about that.
But it is, it's folks that are in our outlying schools that do not have the access to that. So, that's why every school looked different. But, yeah, every, we're going to take care of everybody.
And whenever it comes, you'll hear too, there's a lag. So, just an example, a parent might drop their documents off and they might not get touched...
Right.
For two weeks.
Okay.
So they might sit somewhere. So we're working through department help for that too. I mean, it's not going to be instant, you know, enrollment. So your stuff might be cleaned and sanitized and sit there before we touch it. So we're working on that with Philip Leappert and his crew. But that begins Monday, uh, and then we'll, we'll move forward and we're still taking care of our employees.
Okay. Thank you.
We're now talking about these lights that...
UV lights.
Sunlight, these UV lights. It's just disinfecting stuff like that, just like the sun. It's interesting that...
That's the one...
That's used for the seasonal effective disorder.
That is still, that is still experimental.
It's interesting though that it's coming. I mean, because we're going to have the flu hit too. We can't run from unicorns and, and virus bugs. I mean, it's going to happen to us. Some, it's just going to happen.
Thank you, Dr. Grantham.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Oliver and Ms. Gary are up next with the FMLA. And this, uh, the new FMLA guidelines are so gracious and so accommodating to just about any situation. Even if a situation where you cannot come to work because your child doesn't have school, they can take the 10 days of FMLA. So it's very, very accommodating. And they're going to give you those details and how an employee would even go about asking. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, go ahead, Ms. Oliver.
Good morning. Good morning. Reverend Chair Cummings, Vice Chair King, um, board members? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just a little discombobulated. Apologize. Apologize, Thrower, um, uh, board members.
Yes, yes.
We're going to waive all protocols.
And you're all in different, you're all in different seats now. I've never been here since, so I apologize. I apologize, Ms. Thrower. All right, so today I'm here to talk to you about the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. And as you probably know, this act was signed into law in March, actually March 18, 2020, which was just about six weeks ago. So this is all brand new. It's been coming down the pike. And our department and Dewana Gary especially has been all over this information trying to get it secured and ready for our employees. In fact, we've already been dealing with a couple of employees on this issue and, and people have been granted entitlements under this act. So, the act requires that employers provide their employees with paid emergency sick leave and expanded FMLA. And these entitlements are in effect until December 31, 2020. Now, these entitlements are there for employees if they qualify for COVID reasons, and there are six. We'll go over those in a moment. And, um, if they cannot work or telework. So as long as they can work, there's no reason to take advantage of the entitlements. If they can't work at a building site, but they can telework, then there is no reason to take advantage of the entitlements. If they cannot work or telework, then these are the entitlements that come into play. So, under the umbrella of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, there are two pieces. The emergency paid sick leave and the expanded FMLA. For emergency paid sick leave, it provides up to 80 hours or two weeks of paid leave by the employer for the employee. And this is the employee's regularly worked hours. If I'm a paraprofessional and I only work six hours a day, then I get up to 60 hours for the two-week period. If I'm a teacher, I get it to up to 77.5 hours for the two weeks. Custodian, 80 hours.
So it doesn't come out of anything they've accrued though?
It does not. It is truly employer-paid. It is paid at either 100% of the employee's regularly rate, regular rate of pay or 2/3 of their regular rate of pay. And I'll talk to you about the differences in a moment. So that's emergency sick leave. Up to two weeks of time. Paid at either 2/3 of the regular rate of pay or 100% of pay by the employer. Nothing from the accrued employee's sick leave. Then there's expanded FMLA. And this act has expanded FMLA with only one extra reason. And the reason that people can qualify under FMLA, under this expanded piece, is only for childcare. So, I'm an employee. My child's school is closed and/or my child's place of care is closed, a daycare. Or even an individual who does a daycare in their home. If it's closed and it's not available, then I, as an employee, could take that time. So, the FMLA provides the 12 weeks of Family Medical Leave Act time at only 2/3 of the rate of the employee's regular rate of pay. So, this also is employer-paid.
Was that beyond the two weeks?
It is...
So it's 14 weeks?
No, it's ac, it is 12 weeks. So the first, it's very, um, specific. The first two weeks of the 12 weeks of FMLA can be, um, an employee can use the emergency sick leave for the first two weeks of the FMLA and get paid under the two weeks of FMLA, of, of emergency sick leave.
But it's 10 weeks of expanded.
And then, there's another 10 weeks of FMLA that they can take. And because FMLA is going to be running concurrently with the first two weeks of emergency sick leave if they choose to take it. So it truly is only 12 weeks with a choice of emergency sick leave for two weeks, which will give them pay for the first two weeks. The first two weeks of expanded FMLA is not paid. Because I, I assume they figure employees will take the emergency sick leave. And then FMLA has run concurrent with any emergency sick leave. It runs concurrently. So then after those two weeks, there's an additional 10 weeks of FMLA that will also be paid at the rate of 2/3 of the employee's pay, regular pay.
Only if they have a child that would be unsupervised.
That is correct. Now, of course, regular Family Medical Leave Act is still in play. So if someone has a knee surgery and needs to stay home, they have their 12 weeks available to them. But the only expanded reason for COVID-19 purposes is the childcare piece.
And as far as childcare, I'm wondering about, um, older students with significant disabilities. How would they be covered? Because obviously they couldn't be left at home.
And Dewana can answer very specific questions, but, um, I, this is up to children 18 years of age or even, um, dependents that go beyond the 18 years.
Like our special needs.
Right.
Correct.
22, yeah.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Let me ask a question, J.C. Um, thus, those 10 additional weeks, that comes out of their time, correct?
It does not.
It does not.
It does not. The act literally provides for that 12 weeks, two weeks of the FMLA, expanded FMLA unpaid and the extra 10 weeks to be paid by the employer. So, the act does require that the employer pay 10 of the 12 expanded FMLA weeks that an employee may take. They, they, they expect the employer to pay that. That will not come out of an employee's accrued time. And to be paid for those first two weeks of the FMLA, they can use the emergency sick leave if they care to.
So, J.C., uh, with school ending on June 1st, nobody should need all of that FMLA time, correct?
Well, and that's a good point. People can take this time intermittently. Let's say I have childcare available for Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, but I do not for Tuesday and Thursday. The person that's watching my child just can't do it on Tuesday and Thursday. I could take the time intermittently and the hours would be logged. And when they got to 12 weeks, then it would be over. Or, like you're saying, there aren't 12 weeks until summer hits and they would not use the full 12 weeks. And then, there would be some time left at the beginning of the new fiscal year. Um, and when employees started their positions, this act is in place until December 31, 2020. They would have those weeks to continue to use.
Oh, I thought you said it was in place till September, the...
December, December. All the way to the end of this...
So there would be some that work throughout the summer that that would...
And they can continue to use that as needed up to the 12 weeks.
But for those that end with the regular school year, theirs, theirs would technically stop June 1st. Am I saying that right? Or whenever the school year ends.
Right.
If they could pick it back up.
Like our paras and our teachers.
They could pick it back up when school starts.
Correct.
Would it be based on their contract days? Like, because teachers stay later than paras do. Paras' last day is a student's last day, but not teachers.
Correct. It would be how many hours, yes, how many days they worked. That would, as soon, once it gets to 12 weeks of time, then of course it's...
This is amazing.
It is, it is...
Well, and with the board, I don't know how, uh, doing where we, we were paying everybody through May, uh, or through the end of April, that really helped with this because it, it took us to where, you know, this FMLA can, yeah, isn't, there's not a lot of school time left. So that was so helpful.
And there are so many people that are just out of a job and have been out of a job. So I, I really, I, I'm, I continue to see it over and over, how people are just stepping up. But that's a huge piece of this because, talk about being fortunate as being a, a school board employee and, and what is being done to try to mitigate what's happening out there. So, this is really, really something.
I was going to ask, is there something writing we could have?
Wow.
This is, uh, the poster that has been provided and I wanted you to look at the six reasons. So let's briefly go over those, um, and I'll talk to you about at what rate of pay they're, they're paid. So in the box there at the bottom third of the paper, the six reasons that an employee can take leave under this act include, um, that they're subject to a federal, state, or local quarantine related to COVID-19. Reason two, they've been advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine related to COVID-19. Three, they're literally experiencing COVID-19 symptoms and they are trying to get into a doctor. They haven't seen one yet. They don't know if they have it. It is extended to them. Four, caring for an individual that is subject to either a self-quarantine in number two or a federal, state, or local quarantine in number one. So maybe a parent or a sister, um, well, it has to fall under the regular FMLA guidelines, correct?
If there's a, um, if that's the one for individuals, are you on the one for individuals? Then it doesn't have to.
Oh, so any individual that falls under number one or number two, they can care for that person and receive the, the emergency sick leave. Number five, caring for their child whose school or place of daycare is closed. So, number five is the one that all of these, one through six, an employee can take the emergency sick leave at, at, um, their regular rate of pay for up to two weeks of time. Number five is the only one that is extended for 10 weeks longer of FMLA. So 12 weeks of FMLA for the childcare in addition to the emergency sick leave. And number six, if the employee is experiencing any other substantially similar conditions um, specific to what the U.S. Health Department is putting out or Human Services.
So would this be anybody 65 and older, number six?
That's possible. And I don't have clarification on other substantially similar conditions. Like if there was another...
Is there, is there a definition of that?
That would fall under number one. Or if their, um, healthcare provider has told them to self-quarantine, number two.
Beautiful.
It would hit with one with those CDC recommendations of the 65 and older.
So, J.C., help me continue to wrap my head around this. And, so in the private sector...
That's what's going to get killed.
Would all the private companies be expected to, to somehow be able to pay for this? Or is there federal money that, that's helping?
In the private sector, the employers are required to pay. And they do though have some tax credits that will be coming back to them. But of course, they'll have to apply for that and then wait for that money to come back. We do not have that benefit, but we are also being provided, you know, our, our revenue is there until June 30. We understand that. So, so that's why this is in place for us with no kind of tax credit attached.
I see. So, just locally say, you know, Harries has been closed and the employees haven't been working and Harries hasn't been able to make any money, would they still...
Well, it, uh, the only way you can take advantage of a sick day or, um, FMLA or emergency sick leave in general is if you are an actively working employee.
And that was one of the reasons why a lot of private, uh, entities furlough their employees or lay them off or terminate them so that they could pick up the unemployment.
Employment instead.
Correct.
Yes.
So if you are furloughed, we have our part-time people furloughed. Obviously, if they're not working, they can't take advantage of a sick day because you're not coming in at all. You don't need a sick day. Our people required to continue working who are receiving a paycheck are definitely, um, eligible for these, um, these provisions. So, and number one through three, those reasons are paid at 100% of the employee's pay, out of our pocket. Four, five, and six are paid at 2/3% of the employee's regular rate of pay, just so that you know that.
At what percent? I'm sorry.
100% is for reasons one, two, or three, 2/3% of the pay. So 66.6% of the pay for reasons four, five, and six. The important things to know are this. We cannot require an employee to use their own sick time before they take advantage of this sick time. Let's say I have two months of sick time accrued. Well, I don't need to use it first and you can't make me. And, um, and I, I don't need to take advantage of the emergency sick leave for the two weeks of unpaid expanded FMLA to take care of my child if I don't want to. If I want to take a hit on those two weeks, I don't have to take that emergency sick leave to make sure I'm paid. I can be uncompensated. I might want to save those two weeks when we come back. Or I might want to save those two weeks and use them intermittently now, you know, if, if somehow I come back and don't use all of my 12 weeks of the expanded FMLA. We cannot, absolutely cannot penalize an employee for being in an uncompensated state. Whereas we might normally do that due to board policy. We provide very generous leave, um, provisions. And if you have extended all of that and you cannot come to work, you need to either take medical leave, which is, you know, you must qualify for medical leave, or resign. Under these circumstances, if an employee is uncompensated, we are certainly not going to penalize them. And then the only other thing I have written down here for important things to know is, I think I've already stated it, employees can use this intermittently. So that's very important for our employees to know. We have...
So if their child is sick one day at school, they can just take this? And they can't go to school, say their child's sick for a week and can't go to school?
The kids aren't in school, are they?
Well, it has to fall under one of the six reasons. So if it's just a, an ill child...
I'm talking the fall.
In the fall. So let's say it's a child that has the flu. They wouldn't be able to use any of these provisions because it has to fall under one of number one through six, the reasons that have been provided. Now, if the child has symptoms of COVID-19, then absolutely...
What I'm saying is, if they don't have childcare, then you're, that's, I'm, you know, and, "Well, I don't have childcare for my child," but they do have childcare, except the child's sick.
Oh, it would not qualify. It must be you don't, you do not have childcare...
Available, not just if your child's sick.
Correct.
This is where Dewana would come in.
Correct, due to COVID-19 reasons. And Dewana is going to...
She speaks to that.
It does.
So it's going to be up to your department to administer all of this?
Correct. And we've already been doing this. There are, remember, these entitlements are in place for people who cannot work or cannot telework. And we have people that might have several children at home and simply cannot do the teleworking, which is immense for these teachers. Um, and so...
The bus drivers.
Well, we've been paying everybody.
They've got children at home.
We've been paying everybody.
But if we come back and we require employees to work, then absolutely these provisions would be available to them. And as long as they qualify, then the provision will be provided and they will receive either 2/3 of their pay or 100% of their pay, um, depending on the reason.
So bus drivers that have like a three-year-old at home, in the fall, we might have bus driver problems because they could actually stay home if they don't have daycare. But yet the daycare's...
If the daycare's reopened?
If daycare is closed because of Corona, then...
Okay, but let me ask you this. What if the daycare, how can we say that, all, all they have to say is, "Well, the lady that was taking care of my child is not taking care of children right now. Now her babysitter's not available."
Has to be because of Corona.
Right, and I'll let Dewana speak to that.
If the lady, if that lady that you just said, said that she's no longer taking care of kids because of Corona...
Because of her fear of Corona, though.
That's not it. Has to be because of Corona. She's closed because of Corona.
Because she's got symptoms or in, in the category...
I don't know. I think there's a really shady area there.
There is. You're right.
And I think we could have some employee issues at all.
Well, and we are tracking, we're requesting that the employee give their daycare. And we are double-checking to ensure that those establishments are truly closed and unavailable to the employee. And so we have some safeguards in place, which are certainly allowable. And just know that the information I have shared with you and Dewana is going to share, we've got things posted on the Ethics and Equity website for people to see. We have also posted the poster that you have on the front of, of your stack there. We have that displayed, um, in schools and departments and also on the website. So, uh, the information is definitely out there. We've trained principals, um, across the board with this information as well. And now, of course, you know it and employees, if they're watching, do too. So Dewana's going to now take you through an employee who has, um, an issue that is related to COVID-19 and would fall under reason one through six.
Hypothetical.
Yes, hypothetical.
Good morning. Thank you, Ms. Oliver. So you probably can't see my smile, you know, that I'm smiling. But I am smiling because I am, um, happy that we are taking care of our employees' needs. And that's what this whole process is basically about, is, um, taking care of each individual need. and that's what this whole process is basically about, is taking care of each individual need. So as Ms. Oliver explained, I will take you through the process for requesting leave under the Family First Corona Response Act. And if you'll look at your flow chart we provided you, and that's to assist with the understanding of what this process looks like through the employee's lens when they have to request this leave. So let's begin with the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act. On your left side, it's, it's blue, and again, this is on the website as well. Any employee seeking leave under those six reasons will contact their immediate supervisor to begin that process. So that's the first step, you know, for any of those six reasons. If the employee is unable to work from home, and, you know, for example, I know Dr. Grantham was talking about a painter who's unable to paint the schools from home, and they were looking at, you know, requesting this leave. The school or department's confidential secretary will send the request to my office via email. So first they'll go to their immediate supervisor, and then the school secretary will, or department secretary will get with my office. Once my office has received the request, we will provide the employee with the required paperwork needed to process this. If requested, depending on the leave type, the employee will have to have their healthcare provider fill out the form or the certification form. And that form basically, you know, validates their need for a leave. And that form is returned directly to my office via fax or scan for reviewing and processing. Upon receipt of the required documentation, the employee will receive written notification if they have been approved or if they have been denied the leave. If the employee is requesting leave due to their own illness, that is when a medical clearance will need to be provided to, to my office so that we can make sure that they are good to go and ready to return to work and, and healthy, you know, for their sake as well as the people around them. Okay, so if you look over to the right side, a similar process is indicated on, on the other side of your flow chart. And that is for the emergency family and medical leave expansion. And that's, you know, if the employee, like we were just discussing, have to, they have to take care of their child at home due to a school closure or daycare not being available. And I also want you to remember, you'll see an asterisk right there, that, that regular leave is still, you know, available and will continue as we've been processing regular leave as normal. So in order to be eligible for this type of leave, like Ms. Oliver explained, you would have to have been employed for at least 30 calendar days, and you will have to, you, you won't be able to work from home. So like the example of the painter or another example of a custodian, you're unable to do your job from home. So you would qualify in that case. If the employee meets this criteria, they will follow the same procedure as any other leave request, just like we just discussed on the other side, and they will notify their immediate supervisor. And at that time, the school department's, the school or department's confidential secretary will submit the request to Equity and Ethics and will process it just like we did on the other side. Again, they'll send a request through email. Once completed, the employee will return the form back to my office via scan or, or fax. In addition, in order to verify that a child's daycare or childcare provider, like we were talking about earlier, is unavailable, a childcare closure notice might be requested. So depending, you know, if it's a private daycare. I know there are some daycares that are still open. Yes, even that, because on the form that I request.
They care that one child.
That's, that's fine, too, they still qualify, but, but I still need.
Luke, there's window.
Yeah, you know, like I said, the whole process is about taking care of our employees. So if we have an instance like that, they still may qualify. I need information from them regarding who their childcare provider is. So I'll need a contact information, and that's on the form as well. So, and I'll be, you know, calling.
We believe the best in people, they're gonna do the right thing, but I know.
We believe the best, there's always gonna be somebody.
Well, of course there will, and we'll take care of that, though. And, and I know, too, that, that you'll be clear with folks, that, you know, make sure that this is all truthful, because that is, lying on paperwork is, they'll have that and a lot of other things, yes, so.
And I get what Ms. Stacy is saying, there, there will be, there, there are people that will take advantage of the situation, I get it. But we just hope that in times like this.
We hope for the best, but you gotta plan a little for the worst.
Correct, yeah.
Exactly, and on, on my approval letter, it does state, you know, that you could be disciplined for fraud. Yeah, so it does cover that. But again, like Dr. Mayer said, we are, you know, looking at this as, to help people and, and for the best, looking at them in that light. Okay, so once we have what we need to process the leave, the employee will be notified again in writing. And if the employee is denied, they'll also be notified in writing. So you can access this flow chart, like we said earlier, on the webpage. But the key takeaway from this process is that any employee that's sick, that's seeking leave for any of those reasons needs to go to their immediate supervisor first and notify them. And then that will start the process.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Once the process is started and you receive the paperwork, how long before the employees know?
Well.
They've either been approved or not?
Well, once we receive their paperwork, it'll take, it could take up to three days. But we usually work faster than that.
Okay. And we've got all hands on deck to help.
We do.
So it's not like three weeks, it's like, pretty immediate. And we will pull people to help.
I was about to ask, is that gonna overburn your office?
Well, Doc.
We're gonna pull.
Right, Dr. Mayer and Dr. Grantham have made it clear that, you know, whatever resources we need to implement this, we have it. So thank you for that. We want to make sure that this process is easy and seamless for everyone. And so we want to make sure that it's free of retaliation and free of discrimination. And of course, safety is our number one goal with this. And again, we're considering, we're taking into consideration everyone's individual needs, so.
Thank you.
You know, that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That's a lot of extra work for your office.
Thank you, Ms. Gary.
Very, thank you.
Thank you, JC, Ms. Oliver.
Well, and I gotta brag on them before they leave, because I had heard a, a month ago, two months ago, when this webinar came out, I said, oh, there's this webinar, would y'all listen? Well, they were on top of it, the webinar about this going statewide. And then you had gotten some documents from other counties, and they even found some errors in other counties' documents that they had cleaned up and, and shared with everybody. So thank you for that and your attention to detail. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, ladies. Listen, guys, for the sake of time, I want to, I'm looking at this, the summer school, summer library, summer feeding program, summer VPK, I wanna.
So Mr. McAtter.
Postpone that for today, let's postpone that for all that today, because we need to be out of here in a few minutes, very few minutes. So if we can go ahead.
So has Mr. McAtter and Ms. Beck make their way in to talk about summer school? Let me summarize quickly that.
No, 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 we want to postpone, though.
Oh, you want to postpone, though?
Yes, 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 yes. Yes, let's, let's, let's get a quick discussion from Teresa.
Okay, oh.
Fiscal updates.
We gotta talk about grades.
And, and grades, but quickly. And then all the other things from, on down from students unaccounted, we need to move that to next week.
Okay, so we'll do fiscal updates and grades.
Yes. You guys in agreement?
Well, because of our 10:30?
The court reporter's on hold, so.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I think it's important that we hear all of this.
We got that specific timeframe that we need to.
Okay.
And, and I think that these guys have it under control anyway. They got it, they're just informing us, but I bet they've got a good plan.
And we're not putting it off forever.
Right, just to next week.
We can give you a snapshot of, of the rest of it instead of the minutia.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This will be very, very quick. We spent some time together last work session, talking about the budget and the what-ifs. Nothing really has changed, but what I want to reassure you is that we are almost done building the budget based on the revenue projections that were provided to us. We will then present to Dr. Grantham and Dr. Mayer the budget and with various cuts, 10%, 15%, even up to 30%, and get their input on where we start in terms of reducing expenditures to match the money that we could potentially not get. So we're still working on it, and we're hoping to have a document to Dr. Mayer and Dr. Grantham next week.
Thank you.
Ms. Bossenalls, one quick question. First of all, there's been no cuts yet.
For next year's budget?
Right.
No, because we have not pulled it all together yet.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's clear in the, in the community, because when you hear 30%, it's like, whoa.
Well, again, as Ms. Stacy said, we're going to hope for the best, but we have got to plan for the worst. And then we've got to be able to work with the funds that we have.
Yes, ma'am.
Been allocated. So I would, I would be remiss into telling you everything's rosy, but we're gonna do what we need to do because you have to approve a budget, and it has to be balanced.
Right, right. And then my only other question, and this came from the citizen, and what they wanted to know was, have we gained any savings by having schools closed and buses not running?
As I stated last week, we, you will see those savings when we look at fund balance at the end of the year.
Excellent, thank you.
You will see the savings in fuel, as you stated, and hopefully, energy costs. And just by, we asked our employees back in March, whenever, whenever this whole thing started, to stop buying things that we didn't think were essential, that we're not going to impact our student body this year. And they have cooperated 100%. And that is the expectation that we will continue to get that cooperation and that we will bring in and be able to increase our fund balance, which will help us offset any cuts that we may or may not have to make.
You are a fantastic fiscal agent. There's no doubt, I mean, the best.
Not me, I have a great team.
You and your team. A leader at the top.
That's why I call you chief.
Last week, I was listening to the meeting for the Florida School Board Association, and you guys may have also, and there was discussion, Ms. Bossenalls, about contracts and looking at contracts and probably the departments or what's coming up. And so I would like to see this board, and you guys, if you can, let's see what we can do about looking at our contracts that are coming, what we have, can we reduce any, does any need to be canceled? Because we are gonna have to start looking at cost moving forward. So, Ms. Bossenalls, I'm curious, is there anything, or how could we work on that? Or do you need to think about it and then come back with this later? I know we just kind of threw it out there.
Yes, because we don't have a, a place where all of our contracts are, so we would have to reach out to all the departments and ask them to evaluate all of their contracts, to look for places where things can be streamlined and cut back. But that is an excellent suggestion.
Great idea, and I like that comment very much from the Florida School Board Association. So I think that's an excellent idea.
And all contracts can be canceled in government.
I believe most of them have a 30-day out clause.
They do, because for, for financial situations, we're in a good place because government can cancel contracts.
And that's, that's what Ms. King asked at, those departments, those departments.
If, yeah, and the next one, that would be good, because I.
We definitely need to have that information.
Ms. Bossenalls, is there a required percentage for reserves, is it 3% or 4%?
That is the minimum, 3%.
3% is the minimum, okay.
Right.
Thank you, Ms.
Yes, we're always.
Ms. Ellis?
All right, Dr. Grantham, we'll update you on grades, how we're grading.
You want me to try to hit most of these real quick? Would you like for me to do as best I can? Okay, so grades, Ms. McCall?
Yes.
Uh, elementary grades, there are no final exams, there's never a final exams. So it's third and fourth nine weeks are gonna be counted like they've always been, so it's a third nine weeks grade and a fourth nine weeks grade. There's been an asterisk put on report cards this year in progress reports. The asterisk means we cannot find the child. But here's the numbers, it's 3%. It was four yesterday, it's 3% of our total students that we cannot locate. I would venture to say if we were doing these numbers normally, that's probably lower than this time of season, if, if you've been in the classroom. So 3% of our students we cannot locate. So they have an asterisk on their progress reports, which means no harm, no foul, we don't know where you are right now. And we're still doing our daily, and David Ellers has a much more eloquent presentation, but that's the, that's the gist of it.
Like, it's not like we're not still looking for them.
I got it, right.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just, the equity issue of fourth quarter grades, because it's not gonna be equitable, because we have students that are doing very well with technology. Number one, they have the ability. And number two, they have very supportive parents working with them. Then we've got this group of kids who, I know teachers have found them and they're working with them, but they don't have the technological ability. We've got maybe one Chromebook to three kids or.
Ms. McCall, we can't find these kids, like, we don't know where they are. But we can't put our hands on them anywhere. They might have moved, they might be in another district, they might be in another state. We cannot find these.
But you are comfortable that entering for elementary kids' fourth quarter grades, that the grades that we're entering them for, these kids.
Well, eventually, we will find them, they might be somewhere else, we just don't.
No, I'm just, I'm just talking about even the kids that are working that they have found. Are we equitable?
Yeah, they're getting grades, like normal grades.
So they are getting their work turned in, they are, okay.
Yes, ma'am. And I do want to say.
I understand what she's saying, there are children that, that are doing the program, and there's some that's not, and so how do we balance this?
I've just, and I know we've touched a lot of kids, and I have to count on the teachers to say, yeah, I've got the grades, so I just, I just want to be on record that my concern is the.
And I'll tell you this, too, there's some high school students that we know where they are, and we've given them Chromebook, they're just not doing anything.
Correct.
But they didn't do anything third and nine weeks either.
Correct.
So they're getting their grades, I mean, it's not some new, you know what I mean, right.
So they're the ones that weren't going to school.
Well, I had heard that everybody was getting 100 or something.
No, there's no grade, no, ma'am.
No, well, that's just a rumor.
No.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm doing, just, just elementary, then we'll come to secondary, okay? So you get one grade per subject per week in elementary. So ELA gets a grade, science gets a grade, social studies gets a grade. One grade per week in elementary, that's graded. With the exceptions of your specials, you're elective, it's one per three. So for example, your child will have a specials class for three weeks, and they get one grade per three weeks, because you can't have a special teacher that has every kid giving grades every week, so it's.
How do you do in art?
There, there are actually some, my son had to do a montage out of a magazine. He had to make a robot, and he had to take a picture and send it to her. It's a great. And we only had one magazine house, so that's, it looked pretty bland, but. Yeah, yeah, we can't buy them anymore. Yeah, right, right. So they have five to seven days to complete the assignments in elementary. So if I give it to you on Monday, the latest it could be, it'd be the following Wednesday, school days. If you have five to seven days, progress reports will be, like, they will be on Sky, where we're not sending things out, and Kevin's gonna do an announcement to say, here comes progress reports, and we'll help parents get the access to that if they can. The last day for grades is the last day of student instruction, is June 1st for elementary. Okay, so we're keeping true to what we've already done in elementary, just there's some difference. Here's secondary, so typically in secondary, you have a 40% for third nine weeks, a 40% for fourth nine weeks, and then 20% of your grade is from your final exam. We're doing a 50/50, 50% of third nine weeks, 50% of fourth nine weeks. We can't do final exams, because who's gonna take those final exams, right?
What about those industry certifications?
We're working on that with the state, we're still waiting. So we're gonna do, we're bringing them in, we just don't have a timeline of that yet. We'll bring nine students in to do that. So the 50/50 model is, there's no cumulative anything. You can give a chapter test at the end of chapter nine for the fourth nine weeks, but you can't give a what did you remember from January.
Right.
So there's no cumulative, there's no final exam. It's 50% third nine weeks, 50% fourth nine weeks. There, an asterisk, and it says nothing zero, there's no zeros, an asterisk, if we can't find them, that's still that 3%. Now, there are students that are saying, I'm not doing anything, and they will. Now, there are students that are saying, I'm not doing anything, and they will get a zero, that they're in secondary. If you don't do your work, you're not getting rewarded for.
I want to get 50 points.
You're getting a zero, just like we would in high school right now. Now, there should. Because then teachers argue, I had a child that worked there, and then they made a 50. And this person did nothing and got a zero.
When you don't do any work.
No, the same, same thing. Get your.
So so AP exams aren't going to happen?
Yeah. So question was AP exams, they're trying to do some things where, and they have, where they use the camera and show you're taking it. So there's a lot of conversations about that. They are going to.
So that, but that's not just our county conversation.
No, it's the AP deal.
That's statewide conversation. Okay.
So here's the assignments for secondary. There are five to seven days to complete it. There's one grade per week per subject in high school, which is contract language, one grade per week per subject. So if I'm a math teacher, I get one for you. Seniors' last day, Mr. McAtter said, we meet the hours at May 26. So their last actual expectation for academics, we may 26, and grades nine through 11 are June 1st.
So for the record, if you have a senior that's out there that's working hard to graduate, they need to make sure they have all their stuff turned in by May.
26.
26.
Seniors' last day is May 26.
Parents, let me say it again. Your student, don't call us on May 28th and say that my kid's still working. We're telling you right now, May 26 is the deadline to get your stuff in.
Yes, sir.
And a deadline that won't be moved.
No, it's May 26. We've committed, they meet their instructional minute requirement, their day requirement on that date, and they're done.
If they need help, they need to contact their schools.
Right.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So were principals and teachers, did they have input into the grades?
The union, so we we had conversations with the union, because if we brought a ton of folks in, it would have taken a great deal of time. So these are daily conversations with the unions.
Okay.
And this probably happened, the conversation probably started two weeks ago to get to now.
I just wanted to be sure that they had input, so when we get the emails, that nobody talks.
Mr. Avery, Mr. Altobello, they've been in on it. So let me give you big ticket dates that kind of will get everything together. So May 4th, we talked about is next Monday, is return to the hybrid model, May 4th. May 18th, it's two Mondays, we're going to start some things. Student enrollment, Stephen would have came and told you that, will begin May 18th in a very safe manner. But May 18th also begins when when people can come on campus to get their student stuff through a prescribed.
Okay, so May 18th.
Yes, you can come and say, hey, Johnny left his his three, I got to come pick up those three things, and we'll figure that out.
And every school will design that procedure in cooperation with their area director.
Okay.
Because some elementary schools could say.
Including the safety precautions.
Right, right. Some elementary school, all my kindergarten team and Hammett Bowen couldn't do that. It's too big of a school. So that, based off what their particular needs are. May 26 is seniors' last day. June 1st is our last day of instruction for K-11 students. And then June 3rd, we're going to start taking up textbooks through a very sanitary method and Chromebooks that we've given out, with the exception of the folks that are going to need them for summer school, which are going to be K-5 and some other situations, third grade mainly, right? So again, May 4th, hybrid model. May 8th, parents and students can pick up their belongings. May 26, seniors' last day. June 1st, last day of instruction. And June 3rd, we are going to start taking up textbooks and Chromebooks.
May 8th or May 18th?
May 18th, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. McCall.
And starting next week, teachers will be allowed back on campus in consultation with their principal, who's worked out that plan with their area director.
And remember, we are encouraging, and so will the union, when they sent, we encourage you to stay home. There are some teachers that, for whatever reason, want to come on campus, and we're going to honor that request. Remember this, too, because IU Pat, when they'll be on campus, will have custodians on campus daily.
Does that include MTC? What's?
MTC is a different.
I've had heard concerns from there. Like, one teacher, she said that, you know, one of her students has, like, five kids or something. You know, a lot of students. And she, in her thoughts, you know, she does have to test her students, but it's not like every day or something. And so I, and I think it's not even all at the same time. Maybe they do it intermittently. Can they work out plans like that?
Yeah, we hope they do that.
I've heard, like, all the teachers have to line up and get their temperature and show up. And I, is that taking place, or that's what?
I've not.
That's just what she heard was going to happen.
Okay.
No, once.
So she's still hybrid. I mean, they're.
Whatever's best for her situation. If she wants, and that's what I think we talked about yesterday. Some teachers want to come in Monday. They need some routine. I think they want to leave their children at home, is what I personally think, to, so they can get some, you know.
And all those distractions.
And some want to stay home, whatever they need.
But also, and I know we talked about a little bit, there are procedures in place, because, you know, when you think about the secretary or the people that are in the front, and you have teachers come in and go in, and you're, you know, meeting with all of these people. You may walk in, it just may you and Nancy, but the secretary.
That's a great point, ma'am, and thank you for that, because, and Mr. Whitehouse came up with this fabulous idea. The teachers will just go to their classroom, and then they will check in from their computer.
Okay, so there's no gathering.
And you know, like at Sunrise, where you can just pull up and just walk into your building or walk into your room. We're going to encourage that. If it's like a Mo's where it's the big Colosseum, that that principal will send out direction to the teachers on on how to enter, so that people aren't.
Rotation.
Let me ask this question.
Electronic signing versus going in and everybody walking by the secretary.
Do we provide any type of PPEs for our staff that are coming to work?
Like masks.
We will work on that for, like, the IPCs or those who will be interfacing with others. But our teachers shouldn't be mingling with anybody. That's that's going to be communicated to, come into your classroom, do your thing, and then.
And then leave.
Yes.
So, Rebecca McCollum, Teresa brought that up yesterday. So we have some folks, Amelia's folks are ready. Rick's ready to pass out some masks for schools that request them for teachers. And that was the question, how are we going to protect the IPCs when they come register? Where we're going to do all that? Yes, sir. That's kind of a lot of things in in one, and so anything else?
Campuses will be open Monday through Thursday for teachers, for admin. Then on Friday, and we can, we can give you the specifics next week, but on Friday, it will be where our grounds folks are doing all these little extras that they're going to need to do. The pressure washing, the the weeding.
Well, we we got, you know, lawns that haven't been cut in six weeks, so we're going to try to catch things up. But we're going to make sure that the custodians know to do it away from the teachers Monday through Thursday. And then Friday, they can go start stripping and waxing floors, and they can start cutting grass and pulling weeds, whatever they haven't done for a long time. So they'll, so they'll be on campus Monday through Friday, right? There's a lot, you know, that has to happen. So it's kind of a jumpstart on the summer cleaning is what it is.
So Grab and Goes will go through June 1st. Is that correct? And then next week, we'll talk about the summer feeding program? Okay, so Grab and Goes, I've had that question.
Yeah, it goes to the last day of instruction. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. There being no further business, may I have a motion to recess?
Recession, oh, we have to come back? So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. King, meeting recessed at 10:37 a.m.